Okay.
And so you're doing?
No.
Are we live?
We're like thirty seconds away. I'm gonna go ahead and hit record.
Is BJ on?
Nope.
She also is leaving us tonight.
Recording in progress.
This sounds working.
Sounds good. We should've done that earlier.
Yeah, turn it on, turn it off.
We just wanted to do a sound check.
Hope BJ got the new copy of the agenda with the right Zoom information on it.
Ooh, interesting.
Okay, well, Wes, you're on. If BJ's not on, you're gonna have tape.
Okay. But she also listens to...
She could also go back and listen to it.
She listens to them too.
Our backup audio recording is running.
Okay. We'll call the meeting of the Holiday Island City Council to order. It's eleven eighteen twenty twenty one, six P M. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wes, you want to do the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Councilmember Elwin.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor?
All right, I will declare a forum. Before we move to move on to approving the agenda, I'm gonna make a couple of corrections. I'm going to pull the first, under new business, I'm gonna pull the first item off of the agenda again. The ordinance establishing a police department. I did talk to the sheriff this week, and they're interested in us having a second deputy out here, which is kind of part of the plan for us staffing the police department. But there's some work to do before we get to that point.
That's fourteen.
So when we get closer to actually having a plan with the county, then we'll reintroduce the ordinance. Yeah, that's twenty twenty one oh fourteen, pulling from the agenda. And then the very last thing on the agenda, moving forty-four thousand from the general fund budget to the road fund budget. I'm gonna pull that off the agenda. For now, at least, the transfer of funds between the district and the city or the city and the district relative to the roads is on hold, pending some things we're checking out. So there's no need to do anything with the budget at this point.
With regard to that last one, would that require a resolution anyway?
Probably, probably. To amend, to officially amend the budget. And then on the amend resolution twenty twenty one oh twenty four, that's just for discussion only tonight. I don't actually have amended resolution to present. I just wanna talk about a possibility. So with those changes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Shall I vote second?
Right.
Do a hundred minutes. I've also got the minutes of the workshop of October eighteen and November nine.
We didn't approve the agenda yet.
Yeah, I know. Do you wanna add that?
Oh, uh, yeah, approved, okay.
Okay.
But the minutes of what, all meetings?
Yeah, October eighteen and November nine.
Eighteen.
Those were sent out, those were sent out last week.
And I posted it with the meeting documents.
Yeah, I have copies over there too. Okay, so with that additional change, now do we have a motion?
Move to approve as amended.
Jerry, move to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Lynn, seconded it. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have approved amended agenda. With that said, then we have minutes to approve for ten eighteen, ten twenty one, and eleven nine. Are those the correct dates?
Yes.
The minutes were distributed. Any discussion on the minutes?
Make a motion, will you approve the minutes for ten twenty one, ten eighteen, and eleven nine?
I'll second.
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes. Lynn is seconded it. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memorials? Aaron, done, we'll move on.
Is that, it's not like you're here?
Uh, no, but I'm always like to talk.
Oh, I thought maybe you had some proclamation or something.
All right, moving on to reports then. Standing committee, the financials. Wes, you want to, anything you wanna discuss about them, or just?
Um, I don't think so. I'd have questions, I...
We had them a couple of weeks ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, right.
Uh, that was for October, right?
That was for October, correct.
And they have been posted on the website for a week or four?
Make a motion to accept the October financials.
Ken made a motion to accept the October financials. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second.
It doesn't matter.
Have a chance.
We've all read them.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the October financials are approved. Go on to committee reports. Jerry, any update on the broad day and grant application?
Yes, I talked to Rodney this morning, and our grant and the grants of Eureka, Green Forest, and the county are just about ready. Berryville, whose was, their application was done first, and it was submitted back in July, I think, end of July, was just approved on October sixteenth.
Okay.
And their funding has still not come through, but it is approved. And ours would've already been sent in, but I think I sent you the story, and Rodney called it to my attention in addition, but the governor appointed a, or the state hired a consultant to determine some things, and they delayed further applications until, I guess this guy or woman got his or her feet on the ground. That, the hold is not, has now been lifted, and then the Cassie, the grant writer, is also working, starting to preliminary work on the other grant, which would actually fund the engineering study and design plan, funded. So that one will be coming down the pipe. That'll be from the infrastructure funds that were passed.
Yeah.
And our main support have been, we got a really good response. I have no way of knowing how many people did the speed test, but I got, I don't know, probably twenty emails people that have not been successful in getting COCs or anybody sufficient internet to their house. I've got eight that I gave to the grant writer, and she's compiled them into a support letter with our application, and it's just, I mean, we've all heard the stories, but to see it in some of the hoops they've been asked to jump through. One guy was asked for two thousand to run it. Another one, a person on White River Cove has tried for years to, they put money on it, but they're using their cellphone and selling data and iPad to get internet. Had several of those comments. This one was kinda interesting. Despite, I mean, it's less than I pay for all my COC services, but the Southern Baptist Church on Dove Circle, COCs wants them, they declared a twenty-five member church as a business, and they charge them an hundred and fifty dollars a month for just basic cable. So, I mean, that does support lack of it, it just says it's not affordable.
Do all the churches? Do you have?
I don't know.
Usually churches get a special rate, not the stick it to you rate.
I mean, what he said, it's, Rip Cantwell sent this. Yeah, COCs want a hundred and fifty dollars a month for internet service at First Southern Baptist Circle. They consider us a business. This is more than I, I misstated their membership, only twenty member church.
I think the Presbyterian Church, we started at seventy-five, which is the same range here, a month. And then when they started streaming services on Sunday morning, we had to upgrade service to the next level, and I think it's a hundred and thirty-five now, as I recall, and...
We get a pretty high level for what we pay, no?
Lowest.
For the city? I thought we paid for the better...
No, I think we're, what is it, twenty-five five? I've got a little...
Probably twenty-five three.
That's amended.
Yeah.
Just real quickly, Valley Drive moved in twenty fifteen, got in touch with COCs for internet phone and TV service, said that they were eight hundred feet from their quote nearest drop and could buy overhead wiring and hook up to our address for a cost of ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
I haven't hit the good one yet.
Oh, my God.
Here's another one, have to rely on cell service. This lady says they're having to use their, uh, a smart TV and said her smart TV is not too smart while using personal hotspot spots for, for the phones for internet, so...
I guess we're looking at really the others. I don't know how they figured where they were going to string it.
COCs went out and did a survey of a house on Cochise Drive on December fourth, twenty twenty, and it took them eight days to get back with the guy and that he, they couldn't provide service. He says that, that, they were, that there was good news. They were able to get service to our home, but it would entail some customer fees to accomplish. I said great, and asked if they could give me your range of fees it would take. COCs replied that for forty-seven thousand dollars, they could run the cable to our home. Needless to say, that was excessive.
My God.
Okay.
And I can attest to this, if you have, they have AT and T service on cell phones, and it's very random and inconsistent to use it for internet. Then a real good letter from Chief Lattaker about the internet service and talking about the areas that they service that, that they don't have[859.92][859.95]internet service, Hawk Drive, Bobcat Lane, Wild Turkey. His personal house, he was told that it would take forty-four thousand to run service. And anyway, he says, this is disheartening, because I need to be able to work from home, use internet to better serve the members of the community as a priority. So, I mean, it goes on and on.
And all of this has been given to Rodney, and so he can...
So, I mean, when they look at this and the claim by COCs that they give them, you know, ninety-eight point nine percent coverage, then...
The city service is twenty-five five.
All right, Lynn, planning commission reporting.
We've been going through a document of about a hundred and sixty pages modeling zoning regulations from Tonti Town, and we've had two meetings, two public meetings about that. We spent about five hours. Gone through about the first thirty-nine pages, and it's pretty much some of the standard boilerplate kind of thing, and we're getting into the nuts and bolts of it now. We've been making the edits along with the things that we need for Holiday Island. I've contacted the Tonti Town Planning Commission, asked them the question if there's any areas of their ordinances or zoning regulations that need changes or updated, and the answer I got was there were none identified. However, just this afternoon, because they're a member of the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission, the director sent an email that he has a different opinion than we need to vet out in the coming days. So we need to find out what his opinions are. So the Tonti Town folks think they're just fine, but he has a different answer.
So you're telling us to never mind?
Excuse me?
You're telling us to never mind all the three hours we spent yesterday?
No, no, not saying that at all. I'm guessing he's gonna point out what we already know, that part of the statute was changed in the last legislative session about the method of how people might file a complaint or the difference of opinion of what we might decide. That's one area for sure. And then there's probably the sections that, like signs, sidewalks, fences, that we have just marked reserved for later. I'm guessing there's sections in there, because when I skim through it, I go, wow, is this really what we need to be doing? So that's one of the reasons I marked it reserved.
It also could be since it's coming from the plan that is developing, Northeast, Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning, whatever.
Planning Commission.
It could be something more in line with, they have a vision of what's coming down the pipe for Northwest Arkansas as far as developmental opportunities. And it could be that some of these small town zoning ordinances are too restrictive to accommodate some of the opportunities that may be coming along or something like that. Because they're gonna be building an electric truck plant in Bentonville, and a company called Canoe, that builds electric delivery vehicles, is gonna build an actual plant in Bentonville to employ like four hundred and fifty people, and they're gonna have their their headquarters or their research and development or something like that in Fayetteville. So it may be things like that that they're seeing coming down the pipe for, for that corner of Arkansas anyway. Anything else?
Short of that, I found sticky notes on my laptop, so I can keep track of what I gotta get done.
Yeah, you sent me a copy of the sticky notes. It's, I didn't have the nerve to add anything to it, so...
Thank you.
All right, moving on to business. We have no old business. Under new business, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one five defining how the council member positions for elections will be handled. Let me refer back to my cheat sheet again on how to, how to do this. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero one five, an ordinance establishing a method for electing city council members by ward. I will entertain a motion to suspend and dispense the rule requiring the reading of an ordinance in full on three different days, and read the ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero one five by title only. Do I have such a motion?
Move to approve.
A second?
Whatever you said, yeah.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings. We have a motion by Jerry. Second?
Second.
Ken seconded it. Any other, any discussion on this?
Uh, what about by title only?
I think it needs to be read.
Yeah, I don't...
Call the vote.
Uh, I mean, that was not, I thought we were suspending the three readings. I don't, I think we need to read it. Oh, I thought, I misunderstood you. I thought we were suspending the three readings, not, not one reading.
Okay, well...
You could start again, I don't...
Our city attorney advises that most cities read ordinances by title only, because they post the ordinances ahead of time, and people have an opportunity to read them rather than reading it in full. But if you would rather read the entire ordinance, we can do that.
What does everybody think?
All right, I'll, I will restate the motion then. I'll entertain a motion to suspend and dispense the rule requiring a reading on the ordinance in full on three different days.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rule requiring three readings?
Yes.
Jerry, I accept that motion.
I'll second that.
Ken seconds that motion. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, then we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Okay. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries, so I guess I can read the ordinance. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one five, an ordinance establishing method for electing city council members by ward. Whereas the city of Holiday Island, the city of the second class, adopted ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero zero seven, which established three wards for the city of Holiday Island on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas Arkansas statute ACA fourteen dash forty-four dash one oh three A two requires that qualified, that the qualified electors of every city of the second class shall elect from each ward of the city two council members who shall be designated as council member number one and council member number two of the ward. And whereas Arkansas statute ACA fourteen dash forty-four dash one oh three provides for three methods of electing city council members, and whereas after due consideration the city council has chosen the election method of city council members that will best represent the qualified electors of Holiday Island, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that two council members shall be elected per ward from candidates that reside in the ward from which the candidates seek to be elected. That Arkansas statute ACA fourteen forty-four one oh three B one A shall be adopted for the method of election of city council members. That both council members number one and number two from each ward shall be voted upon by the qualified electors of the city at large, in parentheses, citywide, passing approval of the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this eighteenth day of November, twenty twenty-one. Okay, um, then the next thing I have to do is, the rule requiring the reading of an ordinance in full on three different days has been suspended and dispensed with by a vote of at least two-thirds of all the council members, and I will therefore entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero one five.
Move to approve.
Move to discuss.
The discussion that comes after the motion to approve.
Yeah, you got to do it before the vote. Okay. You got to have a motion on the floor to discuss.
A second.
All right, Jerry made a motion to approve the ordinance. Ken made, made a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor? I had eight separate constituents of Holiday Island come to me on their own and told me that they want to have an opportunity to elect their representative, and that the rest of the city shouldn't have any influence on their vote for their ward. They want to have election of their ward representative by the ward residents only. I'm of the same opinion.
That's kind of the one concern I'm having. How much more expensive and how complicated is it gonna be? And what are we gonna do if we don't get two people running to each ward?
To answer your second question about what if we don't get them, the city council appoints?
At large.
Appoints, hmm, I don't know the answer to that.
I think you have to appoint someone from the ward.
From the ward.
I kinda had the same, it's almost, it's not quite, but it's almost like gerrymandering where you're, you're running the potential of, you know, one, the one ward having some other ward elect their representatives. I'm not sure, did I tell you, no?
Yes.
Even though it's a little more expensive.
I, I can tell you why I propose the ordinance this way. This is the way almost everybody does it.
Mr. Mayor, that's what I was gonna say.
That doesn't mean that we can't be different, but we will be different. We'll be the only city in Carroll County that has a ballot, basically three different ballot faces, one for each ward, and it will be more expensive, and I don't know who pays for the extra expense. It could be confusing to, at least to the county, I don't know.
At, at each voting site, when they go to vote, they would have to each, depending on which ward you live in, you would get a different ballot.
Right. And I think...
So there is extra cost in front of the...
Yeah, because they'll have to have a poll in every ward.
Yes, and programming.
Maybe not.
Well, I don't know that...
They, I don't think they have that.
Originally, it, I, when I read the statute, that's what I thought, but then it said it was...
Said unless the election commission...
You know, somebody's special elections.
A different polling site. So I, I don't think that's, but I, I had tried to have a discussion with County Don'ts and Jerry, and that was what I was hoping. But they're all class one, but that doesn't make any difference. Everybody else in Carroll County elects.
I also looked up Bentonville. Bentonville elects them that way, too.
Right, and I, I think you get...
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Two, two points. We were all elected to a position at large. Set is, I think it's seventy-five or seventy-eight percent of municipalities in Arkansas use the per ward vote by large, at large. And the way to look at that is, is you have points of contact in your ward that you can go to and express your needs, but you also serve the entire city. And, I mean, to me, that's the fairest way. I mean, because you'll have five council people who, you know, have the best interest of their ward at heart, but they'll also be servants of the city. You know, and it may be an economic reason that so many cities do it that way, I doubt it. I think that they believe that that's the best way to elect a representative democracy.
I'll say also, I agree with everything Jerry said, because I think we all need to be looking after the interests of the city as a whole, not just where we live. If we live on the island, I think we still ought to be looking at the rest of Holiday Island and taking their needs into consideration, and, you know, and we're a small enough community that all of our needs are important to all of us. And there are very few needs that are ward specific. Most of the issues we face are citywide issues. And we can't, I don't think we should use narrow glasses to approach... And we can't, I don't think we should use narrow glasses to approach our business.
And the, and the, the members that, I mean, the, the candidates are going to be from the ward. Now, I don't get a vote in it, so, you know, I, I, I went this way because it was the way that was recommended by, by the, uh, the county expert on elections, which is Sherry Cotman. And, um, and in doing a little bit of research, it did seem to me that this is the standard way that almost everybody does it. And, uh, and if you, you know, if you read the law, I mean, if I remember correctly, the way the law kinda reads is that this is the way you do it unless you choose to do it a different way. And the other two options are either by ward or split by ward and at large. So this is, this is, you know, the way the law is structured. This is the preferred way, but if you don't like it, you can take, choose from these other two options.
And we also briefly discussed this at a workshop when we were going over wards.
Maybe more than briefly discussed.
Yes. Uh, and.
I, I, I see no, you know, and it pointed out, there's nothing really that's ward specific that I can think, think of that we'd be doing. I guess, and they would be from that ward. I mean, you, you might. Talk about, you know, streets on the island or streets on someplace, but.
I look at the mechanics of how the state set up our election system and the first thing they assigned us to do is to find the number of wards we wanted in Holiday Island, and we chose three. We divided, divided the community the way we did. And then they ensured or insist that we keep them equally balanced for a reason so that not one ward is misrepresented. And so the representation, that effort that they've gone to for us, that asked us to go into, is important. And I think that reflection on electing our representative by ward is what's important. That's how we elect our state representative, by ward, by district. The guys in Southern Arkansas don't pick our representative, we pick our representative. So that's why I have an opinion. I, I look at the bigger picture. And I don't think there's an issue with a certain ward having some kind of undue influence on a board of six when those representatives come from a board and they have to come and represent the city.
Well, see, I would argue, Lynn, that the bigger picture is what, the way Linda described it. That, you know, we, we will have two per ward, points of contact in the ward and, but with the interest of the entire city allowing the at-large vote.
What, um, yeah, I, I think you stated your position that the advantage of doing, of having the election by ward is that the people in the ward get to pick their candidate, um.
It holds them more accountable because their electors are the ones that go there.
Yes.
Now, it's also, the city's a whole lot smaller than the state. And the, the, the idea of somebody, you know, hot springs electing our representative is a lot more troublesome than somebody, in my case, two houses down, which is in a different ward.
Well, just look at how much we intermix in our activities and our clubs and our social gatherings and everything. We're, we meet with people from all over the community, you know? Um, so, you know, I, I want to represent all of those interests.
Oh, I think everybody, oh, I just.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the floor up to a public comment.
That's kinda, that's kinda good.
Anybody, uh, anybody wanna make a comment? Where's, where, where would they have to stand?
I got my mom, let me put the camera on you, so.
Oh, gosh.
Are they, that's not hooked up to?
Well, we hooked up to P A.
I think, I think everybody.
There's only seven of us, we.
You don't need to say who I am and where.
Yeah, for, for the record, yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
I'm Barbara Talbot, I reside at Nine Horseshoe Drive. And Lynn, I really thank you for making those comments in consideration. Even though we may be a small community, uh, we don't always all come together. There are, there's a great diversity of, uh, people with incomes and means. And I believe it is very important to have the wards vote their members in to. There's, there's a difference in go out to unit one and go out to unit two. There's a difference in what their needs are and their concerns are, that they have no idea. Yes, part of that is their own fault because they don't become involved. But I think it is important for them to feel like they have a seat at the table. And if you split that, there's a different mindset. Now, that's just my opinion, but I would really appreciate some consideration to limit those to, to the ward itself. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Rick Chambers, Fort Coe, Elwin Drive, uh, Leanne, yeah, I appreciate it, I really do. Um, I think that's why we set up wards in the first place, is to get buy-in from the residents in those wards, whether they're small, large, doesn't really matter. It's kinda like the point that was brought out about our state representatives. People in Southeast Arkansas do not elect the representative for Northwest Arkansas. Um, and again, the same thing here, we want community buy-in, we want growth of community in a positive manner. At-large thing, I do not believe grows the community in a positive manner. So again, Lynn, I appreciate you bringing that up, appreciate your points, I think they were excellent. Barbara, same here with you, and, uh, I don't know that I have anything else to offer. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Susan Rosen, One Henry Circle. Thank you, Lynn, for, uh, I'm sorry, Wesley, for, uh, speaking my points exactly. Um, please consider that we need to have our representatives from our wards and not an at-large thing. I don't think it will be good for our community as a whole to grow, but thank you.
And I'm Jane O'Hara, I live at twenty-eight Mission Hills Lane, and I can also speak for my partner, Jan Wells, uh, who is under the weather a little bit tonight, with a knee injury. I definitely want to see us elect by ward. Uh, I'm from Chicago, I'm glad, really glad to be here. And, uh, I wanted to get away from that kind of partisan politics. But you can only vote for your ward representative in your ward, and they have to live in your ward there. Um, just because it's, the way it's always been done or in some other town down here, I don't think that, I don't think that's a consideration. Uh, if it costs a little more, and I can't see how it could cost a vast amount more to do this this way, uh, find the money. So, that's, I go for number two.
Call for a question?
I wanna, can I pause this for a second because this is VJ Dennis, who typically would be taking our minutes. VJ? She'll call Linda next. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to make one other point, um, 'cause what you guys said kind of hit something in my mind. And one of the reasons that I felt that it would be best for people to vote at large for all the candidates uh, was because if I only get to vote for my two people in my district or my ward and I don't get a say in who else gets on the council, I feel my voice is diminished. Whereas if I can vote for all six candidates and pick all six candidates, I'm, I'm getting a say in the majority of people who will have a say-so on that council. That's the way I'm viewing it. I get, I get more say-so by being able to vote for everybody, rather than just the two people that live in my district.
Dan, if I can make one more point, uh, to, to what you just said. The council I served on, Oklahoma, uh, was elected by ward at large. Uh, and what we did is that we had, uh, town hall meetings, uh, one a quarter in each ward, uh, where the council person from that, or actually two council people from each ward, they would run the town hall, but all the council members would, would attend. And, I mean, that keeps you, you know, everyone, uh, getting, uh, you know, you get to speak to everyone and address, so.
Hear the voices of.
Hear, hear the voices of people in that ward.
And I personally don't think the cost is any thing of consideration here.
Um, you talked to Sherry, but, I mean, they would have to print a separate ballot for each ward.
They would have more cost, but not others.
And then the people at the election would have, you know, they, everybody coming in would have to know what ward they lived in.
Well, you know, I don't.
Yeah, that is why, but the cost didn't think, it's what's the right thing to do. I call a question.
I think, I can't see where that would, uh, keep anyone from having good representation. I mean, that, I, I mean, the people are from your ward, um.
Okay, I think we pretty much know what everybody's position on this is. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead, we have a motion on the floor.
Can I add one, I have one more point worth in the discussion? And that is, when we voted to not read it three times at three separate meetings, does that mean it's gonna pass tonight without? As, where's the emergency clause?
It doesn't take an emergency clause. If, with the emergency clause, it would be effective tonight, as soon as we sign.
Oh, you're saying it's gonna be.
It goes in effect in thirty days.
Okay.
It goes in effect in thirty days because we passed that ordinance for, what was it called?
Be effective.
There's, this ordinance allows these to go in effect in.
They have thirty days to petition to.
The referendum.
Referendum.
For referendum.
Referendum. Yeah, that would be the recourse for the people if they didn't like the results of the voting. They could, they could petition for.
But it'll be posted for thirty days, or ninety, or so.
Thirty.
It would be posted now, but it would be.
If approved tonight, it's posted now and hangs for forty-five days.
Effective in ninety days.
No, Dan, it, it will be effective in thirty days, but it hangs for forty-five, correct? Are postings hanging for forty-five days?
I'd have to go back and read that one.
Okay.
I would have to read it. I would say that that was for thirty days.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Okay, council member Dumas?
No.
Council member Elwood?
No.
Council member Graves?
Yes.
Council member Mills?
Aye.
It's all up to you, Jerry.
Council member Pittman?
Yes.
Three in paper and two against Mr. Mayor. I was, uh, doing some, uh, doing some, uh, quick math here because, uh, I think that, um, the, there's supposed to be two-thirds. Two-thirds of the council members have to approve the ordinance. And since we have five council members, we have three-fifths, not two-thirds.
Does that mean?
It's only sixty percent.
It's only sixty percent, not two-thirds.
Does that bring your vote into it or what?
You not get the cast.
Yeah, it's not, it's not tied. It's not tied, so I don't think I vote at this point.
Well, you're, you're not gonna ever have a tie with five people.
Well, you will, one is missing when we get six.
One is missing, yes.
Uh, or somebody that's.
Well, we don't have six.
We may have to table this until I get a legal opinion on whether the law intends for the majority uh, to, to mean the majority as opposed to two-thirds.
And maybe the two-thirds includes you because you're part of the city council, it might include you. So if that was the case, you only got three votes out of six.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think at this point we should record the vote as, as tallied. And I'll get a, uh, a ruling on this as to whether or not a majority of the council constitutes passing or if it does in fact take two-thirds, minimum two-thirds, which means we have four.
We'd have to have eight percent.
Well.
Yes, in our council.
It's the only other option. If it's gotta be two-thirds or more, then we'd have to have four out of five. Didn't expect this to come up. Back up beginning, I was confused exactly as to where we were. Who made the motion and who seconded?
Jerry made the motion and I seconded.
Mr. Mayor? Is it appropriate to, uh, bring to the floor a revision of this and call for a vote on it? So at least we have a record of what the other opinions might be, because there are three options in the statutes. Or we just wait because we have this action we have to know about?
I, uh.
I don't know what we would be able to do.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to have all three on the agenda, I think, for us to table this.
We can amend, that's on the agenda, we can amend.
We've already, we've already passed this.
Yeah.
A little weird.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna vote on an alternative ordinance tonight, but, but I'm, I'm willing to entertain further discussion at this point on what an alternative might be.
Well, from ours.
Because the third option would obviously be the best compromise. One elected at large and one elected within.
By the ward.
In, within the ward. That would be the best, splitting the baby as, as I.
How, how complicated would that make the ballot go?
It's still, it's still gonna be a unique ballot for each ward, that's all. And they're gonna have to print seven hundred and some ballots for each ward instead of twenty-four hundred of the same. That's their difference, that's their printing cost.
My gut feeling is that, that revision would pass.
There's no deadline, I'm getting, well, there is a deadline, but the deadline isn't, isn't tonight. So we can, we can bring up, you know, we can, we can, at the next meeting, if we just, if, if you guys vote aside, we can pull this one, vote to, to pull this one.
Well, not if you, not if you determine that this vote was, uh, sufficient.
If that's, if that's, if this was valid, then this one's approved.
And I've got to think they've got, there's got to be something we're not reading, because I don't think we're the only.
Five-person board?
Five-person board.
Probably it might be, because most any place that has wards already and they got two people per ward, so you're gonna have, you're not gonna have a fight.
Alright, I'll, alright, this is where we're at on this, on this ordinance. We have a vote, I have to find out, I have to get a legal opinion as to whether, whether it constitutes a sufficient percentage to pass. If not, it'll be on the agenda again for next month's meeting. If it passes, it passes, I'll let it. If it passes, it passes, I'll let everybody know. Okay, moving on then to...
Dan, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
We got here a little bit late. We tried, we've been trying for about a half hour to get in on the Zoom meeting, but it says that there isn't one.
That's probably because there was a version of the agenda posted early on that had the incorrect Zoom information on it.
Okay, well, yeah, I took it, I took it off of the, uh...
The one that's out there now should have had the correct contact.
Well, it took this, took this one off of Facebook.
Your post?
Linda, your, your post on Facebook, yeah, it wouldn't let us in.
So how many more progressives?
Five others trying to get in, nobody can get in.
Yeah, I sent you a, I sent you a text earlier, Dan, but I figured your, your phone's probably muted.
Yeah, it is.
But it would not let us in using, using those numbers.
I'm sure BJ is having the same problem, she tried to call me.
So the, anyway, this ordinance, and so are we talking about how we're going to elect the city council members?
Yes.
Okay, so that's been voted on then already?
Yes.
And it is which one of the three?
At large.
Yeah.
And limbo.
Right, right, it's not a two-thirds majority. That's just balls, they all, oh my gosh.
Well, how many people could have given a comment, though?
How, how did we know that was gonna happen?
How many citizens told us to come down to the interview tonight?
That's disturbing.
How did we know that was gonna happen?
That's disturbing.
Well...
Residents are talking about this.
Why would we want to be at large, if I understand?
Residents are talking about this. Residents were going to be on Zoom tonight to voice their opinion.
Many people, many people.
This needs to at least be held over for another meeting, where people at least get the opportunity to voice their opinions.
I mean, I don't know if opinions matter or not, or if it's just gonna be a vote by, by, you know, the, the city. But, uh, if you're gonna put it out there for opinions, then you need to listen to people.
And you need to give the people the opportunity to be heard, which is what we thought we were doing tonight.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm going to, not adjourn the meeting, but I'm gonna recess the meeting here until we see if we can figure out what's going on with Zoom, because this might not even be a legitimate, a legal meeting if we're, if we're...
I thought you said we were leaving the line.
Shutting everybody out.
We're not having anybody on.
Thought we had people on earlier. Are we doing a, are you recording as well?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's still a legal meeting, I mean, we have a recording of the meeting.
Yeah, I did not have the right Zoom meeting up.
Oh, the, the one you launched?
Yeah, the one I launched was not the right one. It's true. Wasn't the one I published. What do you wanna do?
Well, I think we're...
Why, why don't we just continue with this meeting and then just put that on the agenda for the next time?
Yeah.
Well...
How can we do that? Except that we've already voted on it.
I'm concerned that we would be in violation of the open meeting law, since we, since we allow Zoom as a method of attending the meeting.
This Zoom software has caused so much grief, and the state doesn't mandate that we do it, because we invited, I think you're probably correct. But I'm in favor of not putting Zoom out there, because the doors are open, no one has a mask, the room is big enough to hold more than twenty people.
We, we sat in a room with two hundred and some people at High Hog just the other night, and nobody had a mask on, we were side by side.
But you're the one who restricted it to twenty people.
Right, I understand, but the room doesn't have twenty in it tonight, so then no one was turned away at the door.
No, but I said, we, we finally decided to come up.
I understand.
Because we tried for about a half hour to get in for a meeting.
We can decide what to do going forward relative to Zoom, but for tonight, we have to make a decision if we're going to adjourn or, and reschedule a meeting, or continue on. And I guess the decision would be mine to make. And I believe we are probably in violation of the open meeting law by continuing, um, since we have, we gave the public the option of attending on Zoom. And, um, so I believe that at this point, I'm gonna, let me scan the agenda and see if there's anything inconsequential that we, uh...
We could just redo the whole meeting on another day.
It's going to be always out, though, because I'm not gonna be here next week. So it'll be the first week of December. There's nothing on the agenda here to me that's time-sensitive from that standpoint, that we can't reconvene. And I'll, 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 I'll even question with Justin on whether or not his vote was legal, was since it wasn't on, um, since Zoom wasn't working.
I think it's worth a vote to investigate the two-thirds issue, so that we don't face it again in the future.
What about the writ?
The what?
The writ, Van Neves. I, I don't...
Do I even need to vote on that?
No, I just need to, I guess I, I need the backing of the council to move forward with it.
I think that's good.
Since that doesn't require a vote, we could probably discuss that and, and get approval on that. Um, for everybody in attendance, what we're talking about is, is, uh... Taking action, it's the item, the agenda item, taking action on county property tax for roads. We, uh, we have a disagreement with the county. Uh, cities are entitled to one-half of the three-mill, uh, property tax for roads that the county, um, levies. Um, that, that's the law. Um, the law simply states that in the year the tax is collected, it gets distributed to the cities. The county, and there's an attorney general opinion supporting that, that it's the year that the tax money is collected. The county is of the opinion that since the tax that they're collecting in 2021 is the 2020 levy that was approved by the, uh, by the forum court last December after we were incorporated, there's, they're saying that we weren't incorporated yet in 2020, and consequently, we're not entitled to that tax money yet this year. Like I said, there's an attorney general's opinion, Bill Vista went through this same problem when they incorporated in 2007, where Benton County didn't wanna, uh, pay the, the tax money. They got an attorney general's opinion on it, and based on the attorney general's opinion, Benton County went ahead and paid, um, Bill Vista. So basically, you know, we're not trying to pick a fight with the county. We have a difference of opinion on, on a legal matter, and we need a court to, a judge to tell us whose opinion is correct. So, but we can't, we've been unable to get the county to respond to any of our requests for comment or input or feedback or anything. So, um, we really have no choice but to take legal action. I have no, now that I'm aware of the fact that the, that there's an attorney general's opinion that says that we're entitled to the tax money, I have no legal authority to tell the county that it's okay if they just keep the money this year. So, um, you know, I, you know, so based on that, we asked our attorney to draw up a, um... Let's see what the legal term is.
A motion for declaratory judgment?
Yeah, yeah, a request for declaratory judgment on it, and a writ of mandamus, which means that, um, once the decision, decision is made, they have to do something. It just, it just says that they can't choose to do nothing. So, um, with the council's permission, we will move forward with that legal action. I'm still hopeful that once the county is aware of the fact that we're willing to go to this extent, that they will agree with us and, and just work out some arrangement for us to get the funds for the title to. So I wish we didn't have to do this, but we really have no legal recourse. So, okay with the council?
Fine.
Uh, one other question, Mr. Mayor? Uh, ordinance sixteen, we wonder about levy, you know, going to the county with the levy for 2022?
That's right, they wanted a copy of that. That is, that one is so harmless, that I think that it would be very low risk for us to go ahead and vote on it.
I mean...
And if, if need be, we can reaffirm that vote at the next meeting and open it up for discussion, but, um...
If we don't do it now, she, we would have to have a special meeting to get it...
Once again, for, for the, for the general public, uh, we do not, we do not levy a city property tax. However, unbeknownst to us, um, they still, the county still expects us to pass an ordinance setting our millage at zero dollars, and they, so that they can give back to the tax collector and the county board and everybody. So then it's, it, it's understandable that they want to document so that there's no misunderstanding. Since they're responsible to collect the tax, they don't want any misunderstanding that we wanted to levy a tax, but we've elected to tell them.
Didn't we have to do the same thing to set our salaries at zero?
I don't think we had to, but we did just to, just to...
I don't think there's gonna be a lot of discussion about this one, so...
So, um, so that's, let me go back to my paper then, and we'll, we'll do this very quickly, I guess. Uh, the next item on the agenda then is, uh, consideration of ordinance 2021-016, an ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas for the calendar year of 2022. Um, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the dispense of the rule requiring a reading of the ordinance on three different days, and read, read ordinance 2021-016 tonight.
So moved.
Ken made a motion to suspend the three, three readings.
Second.
Linda seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor of Mr. Mayor?
Okay, um... Then, uh, we'll go ahead and read the ordinance. An ord, ordinance 2021-016, an ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, for the calendar year 2022. Whereas Arkansas Code Annotated ACA 2673-202 states that the governing body of a city or town must certify the rate of taxation levied to the city clerk annually, whereas this must be done prior to the time levied or fixed by law for the forum court to levy taxes, Arkansas Code Annotated ACA 1414-904B. Now, being ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that section one, real property millage for maintenance and operation, a tax of zero mills is hereby levied on all real property within the city limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section, section two, personal property millage for maintenance and operations, a tax of zero mills is hereby levied on all personal property within the city limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section three, the city clerk is hereby directed to file a copy of this ordinance with Carroll County Clerk as soon as possible after the passage of the ordinance. Emergency clause, since this ordinance is required to be submitted to the county forum court prior to the le, levying meeting, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effective immediately upon passage. Do I have a motion to...
I'll make a motion as read.
To...
Approve, oh, approve 21016.
As read.
Second.
Uh, Pat made a motion to approve the ordinance, and jury seconded it. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
The motion carries. Since this ordinance has an emergency clause, a second vote must be taken. On the emergency clause, do I have a motion to, uh, accept the emergency, the emergency clause?
Now moved, do we accept the emergency clause?
Linda made the motion.
Second.
Jury seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 2021-016 with the emergency clause is adopted. And Wes, as soon as we sign these, you can, I'll get a copy over to Connie.
Okay, we will both need to sign.
Thanks for bringing that up, Ken, I forgot that we have a deadline on that.
We need to make a note somewhere that we need to do this in October, because we were behind the...
Right.
...curve on this year.
Yep. Yeah, we have to have a calendar for next year that's got all the critical events on it. Right, and, um, I think everything else on the, uh, on the agenda is either not time-sensitive or needs to be considered in front of the full audience, including the Zoom participants.
Uh, question on the action on the county property tax for roads. Since this will involve the legal action, do we have to have a motion and vote?
I don't think so.
Consensus?
I, I don't have a problem with that, but...
What's the question? I would think we need to have a motion to proceed with the legal action.
Wes is recommending that we actually have a motion and a vote to proceed with the legal action as a matter of record?
We can, I don't know that we need to.
Doesn't hurt anything.
Doesn't hurt anything, we're all here.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, Pat makes, is making a motion that we
File the...
Take a, uh, a vote on proceeding with the legal action, uh, with the county.
I'll second.
Ten seconds, any discussion? I think a simple aye vote on this, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, carry it. I'll get with Justin in the morning and have him proceed. Alright, with that, um... I guess I could still open for public comments, anybody, uh, have any other comments? We'll reschedule the meeting and make a, put a, put out an announcement. Uh, Linda, you want to put something out on Facebook apologizing for the... Linda, you want to put something out on Facebook apologizing for the.
I will.
For the oversight and telling everybody that we are going to reschedule the meeting with a new agenda.
Dan, may I?
Uh huh.
Barbara Talbot, nine-horse shoe drive. I wanna thank all of you for moving this to a different timeframe. You know me well enough to know my preference for myself is to be face-to-face. I absolutely hate Zoom. I do it because I have to. It's just not the same. Even when you do get comments on Zoom, I don't believe as it is when you actually have the people that you're serving right here to really get the full effect of what's important to the community as a whole. And you know me well enough to know that I do think in terms of the community as a whole. So I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate that you've considered to move this to a different timeframe and to encourage people to come to the meetings. If you never did Zoom again, I'd be A-OK with that.
Yeah, I'd be A-OK with that. I vote for that too. Is there any reason we have to continue with the Zoom?
Please don't. Well, actually, it's, it's nice for people who can't come or have other engagements to be able to catch up on whatever.
Not here, not in town.
Not in town.
I agree. I think Zoom's a great option.
All kinds of conditions.
Except for those people that don't have internet.
You know, we've. It's possible.
They get internet before he said no.
It's possible that we could, so that we didn't never get into this situation again.
So that they.
We could possibly, and I guess I'd have to check with our attorney again to see if this is legal, but we could possibly have an ordinance that says that we will, that our, our public meetings will be open to the public and that we will offer Zoom as an alternative, but not as a condition of conducting the public meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
Mr. Mayor, there are some communities that don't have a Zoom. They use a broadcast. They simply broadcast it on their circuit TV or through the internet and there's no opportunity for the public to interact, but they can see the meeting happen. So we could do a broadcast and it'd be out there for whatever. So maybe we can investigate Scott, well, Fox to put it on TV.
Holiday Island Presbyterian broadcasts on YouTube and you can actually chat, send chats just like you do on Zoom on the evening.
Some people get questions.
It could be cold-circuit TV and just a simple broadcast.
We could zoom it and not invite anybody.
For what?
We could zoom it and not let anybody in, not invite anybody.
We tried that tonight.
Yeah.
I like the, I like the broadcast idea. I, you know, I don't have to be the technical person with Zoom, but it, it's a problem. It's clumsy. The board commissioner has problems with it every meal, every meal. It's late every meal. I, if, if, if somebody wants to, one of the council members wants to bring a, an ordinance proposal forward at one of the future meetings to, to establish a method of doing that, I'm.
But to your point, we've got to have it out because, we didn't specifically talk about it, but the internet is so spotty here.
You know, we had to cancel one meeting.
Yeah, just, I mean, you couldn't negative it at all.
That's when we had a restriction that we couldn't have anybody participate, so that's.
That's gone away.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I think, I think we need to evaluate. Well, I, I know, you know, the churches, you know, we broadcast our mass over Facebook.
So you can't get Wi-Fi here?
It's down on.
On the island it can't.
Yeah, that was, back in one of our first meetings, it was down.
Just a couple months ago, but I mean, we.
Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion that we adjourn the official meeting. And we can sit around and chat all night long if we want to.
Are we gonna come up with a date for when?
Oh, yeah, we want to.
Meeting schedule, good idea.
Yeah.
One for Ken, we overlook.
When are you coming back?
Uh, let's see, calendar.
We might get more done if we have a meeting without you here.
I'll be back on the 29th, so I mean, we could have it like on the 30th.
Is that Thursday or?
We already have a planning commission meeting on the 30th. At nine.
Nine, excuse me. Planning commission is at 9:00 AM.
Yeah, so we could have, we could have the city council meeting at.
Six PM.
Six PM.
You all do that?
On the 30th?
It would still be this month, then, November 30th.
Okay.
Ken, was there anything else I wanted to look at?
Yeah, where's my coffee?
Entertain a motion to adjourn, someone, we have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?